Clearing at 4:30 by my watch. Today is Tuesday, January 10th. It's a meeting of your Christian Board of Selectmen. There's a motion to call the meeting to order.
So moved to second.
All those in favor.
Got it.
Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic before which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. First item on the agenda is that we have an announcement. Is that on January 12th at 6:00 PM, at the Council on Aging, the Board of Selectmen will be hosting a special session, essentially a public hearing, if you will, to take public comment on DEP regulations regarding nitrogen areas. There's been a lot of discussion about DEP and them kicking off a process in which homeowners would have to tie in or upgrade their septic systems. We met with DEP via Zoom probably about a month and a half ago. I think you were ahead of the curve on that. And at the time, the Board asked some, I think, some tough questions and expressed opposition, although the Board has not formally voted. To express opposition, I think it's safe to say that is the consensus here. So we felt it was important to get homeowner resident feedback. So we're going to have that session at 6 o'clock. It's really here for people. It's going to be very structured. You know, 6 to 7, 6 to 7:30. We'll have a sign in sheet. People come in, name, address, state their position on the issue. We want to get as many people on record as possible and then we will package that up and include it with our official comments. I spoke with Senator Montigny. He will not be able to attend, but he has a letter for us and our state reps. At least Representative Schmidt will be there. I'm not sure anybody else, but we've, we have been in contact with our members of the legislature.
Well, Schmidt will be there.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that you people are aware of that. It is January 12th, 6:00 PM, at the Council on Aging to talk about DEP regulations regarding nitrogen areas. With that said, we do not have any minutes. First item, we have two appointments this evening. And our first appointment, Mr. Hinckley is a resident in town. Has an issue. Mr. Hinckley asked me to put on the agenda. So I'm going to turn it over. Mr. Souza, I'm going to turn it over to Bob to run this portion of the meeting.
Okay.
I know that, I understand the issue, Mr. Souza, to you. I know we have spoken in the past and you've got frustration that you haven't come in here sooner than that, sooner. My apologies to you for that. It wasn't intentional. It wasn't, you know, trying to block you from that. But there was, you know, a court case and it seems to be that, you know. Anyway, that's come and gone. But I did want to at least tell you that, offer that to you here tonight. So I'll turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Mr. James Souza has been having an ongoing issue with a neighbor going back to 2017, to the point where legal proceedings were started. Those are withdrawn now, so there's no current legal action. And he's looking for the Board to help him find a resolution to his issue. He started this process on the December 6th Board of Health meeting, where all members did agree that he had a nuisance on his hand. They wanted to refer it to us to get our idea on what should be done in this particular situation. So, Mr. Souza?
Yep.
Would you like to state your name and address? And come up with a point here?
Yeah, my name is James Souza. I live at 183 Metapoisier Road, Cushinget. I've been there. I've lived on Metapoisier Road. I'm 57 years old. I've lived on Metapoisier Road for 56 years out of the 57. So I'm a longtime resident of that road. I kind of got a cap log. I know that I submitted a package to the town. In there is a cap log. If you don't mind, I'd like to kind of go run through this a little briefly here. I don't want to take all night, but I do want to just go across a few things here. So Harry and I have been a 30-year number. That's neighbor. That's his name, is Harry Perry. We've been 30 years neighbors. Through those years, we've done a lot of things together. I have helped him cut. I've helped him split wood. We've painted cars together. We've done bodywork either in his garage or my garage. So it ain't like this has been just like since day one. It's been the last five years. So within the last five years, Harry started this wood thing where he traded, the very first year in 2017, he traded wood for a car. He got a car at an auction. He fixed it up. He painted it. And the guy had no money, so Harry had the guy give him wood. Well, the wood pile grew astronomically where I started saying, wow, what's going on here? I went over and talked to Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry says, hey, listen, I got this car. I traded it. Guy has no money. I'm like, okay, it was a bar deal, right? Figuring that it's going to be the end of it. Well, it wasn't. It was just the beginning of it. And then last year was the worst year of all, 2021. On March 20th last year, I went over and I talked to Harry regarding the wood. That's the first load that he got. And it was a small pickup truck load saying, hey, listen, me and my wife can't, we cringe every time we see you go outside in your yard. We have no enjoyment of our property. Well, he told me that it was going to be all over, that he's going to get tired of the wood business. He's going to do it a different way. So on April 17th, one of these truckloads came in. And since April 17th, I went over and I talked with Harry and I'm like, hey, this ain't no different. This is worse. You're not taking pickup truckloads now. You're getting a hit. Well, it is what it is. So I kept talking with Harry. I went over there again on April 24th, after he was destroying my April. I talked with Harry. The neighbor across the street was in the garage. I kept begging, please don't do it every day. That's the biggest problem I had with all this, is it goes every single day. So Harry said, well, it is what it is. So again, once again, I'm taking and not getting anywhere. On May 8th, I even built a sound barrier. Last year on Mother's Day, I spent the Saturday and Sunday trying to build a sound barrier fence. So maybe it don't go through my yard. Well, that had no avail at all. July 21st, from April 24th to July 21st, it kept going. Another load came in on April 21st of last year. Started getting information from the town, from the Board of Health, but I never put a complaint in because I figured two neighbors that are 30-year neighbors should be able to handle this with each other. That didn't work. So it went all the way till August 31st. So of 2021, it was 62 days, around 200 hours, nights, weekends, and holidays. Now, I have videos. I have sound. I don't know if the town wants me to put a video up so they kind of know what this is sounding like. I know I did at the Board of Health. I don't know if you all seen that. But what I will do is I'll give you my Memorial Day, which is right here off my phone. It's exactly what happened. And I did a video every hour on the hour. And that was May 30th.
Okay, I'm 163 feet away and I'm watching it.
Oh. I almost shut it off. Sorry about that.
My property, 163 feet wide.
I don't know if the Board wants to pass it around? Take a look at it? I'm not sure. You'd like to see a little stuff?
No, I'm not saying.
I think you do want to see. That's my Memorial Day. That was two weeks after it started. I already started.
I can't believe that any law would allow this.
Pretty loud saw, huh? There's two saws going. That ain't one. So there's two saws going. But get this, I couldn't even go in my house. I have a video of inside my house where the noise is pretty bad. So my Memorial Day that I took and had friends over, tried to have a cookout, couldn't do it. We had to stay in the house, windows closed. And it ain't too hot in Memorial Day weekend. But the worst part about that, after the chainsaw stopped, and I got it right after it. Um, where is it? Can you guys hear that? I'll show it to you. That's me trying to sit on my deck. That's his radio going. So not only do I have to hear the chainsaw all day, I had to hear the radio. So I believe there is a lot of retaliation going on with this. So then this year, on April 23rd, Harry received another load. Same truck, same load. So up to three loads in 53 weeks of that size wood. So this year, I took and immediately went to the Board of Health. So I was talking to the Board of Health. They said there wasn't much that I could do considering I didn't even show them a video yet. He hasn't started cutting. The wood was on the property. On May 15th, on a Sunday morning at 10:00 AM, two chainsaws started cutting for four hours and 31 minutes on a Sunday. That's what I had to listen to. Then it goes every weekend, every week after work. My April was every single night except for the days that it rained. Then I got a couple of days off, but it was from 4:00 to 7:00 at night. It's getting really tiresome. I've been over to Joe, talking to Joe. Joe kept saying, oh yeah, you got a nuisance, but you know, we can't take his rights away. I know it's a nuisance for you. So finally, we took, and then we went and I talked to Joe and we tried to get on the Board of Health meeting. We had a few problems due to COVID, everything else. So instead of me going in like August or September, it didn't go until December. But before I gave it to the meeting, Joe also gave Harry at July 16th, Joe and Harry had a conversation and Harry moved all his wood to Barry's house. Barry McKay is at 151 Middle Road by an equipment trailer. They cut it all there. They split it all there. Harry being a nice guy, so I don't have to listen to it. All the wood came back to Harry's after they did it. That was one of the guys that Harry was splitting the wood with. So you say to yourself, why is it coming all back? So on July 30th, the police shut it down again. On October 7th, I guess he got a bunch of verbals to do it again. And it finally stopped on October 8th. And so this year, it was 35 days and a little bit over 92 hours. The only reason I say a little bit over because sometimes I don't stay at my house and try to take and figure out what time he stops. Me and my wife actually leaves. There's some weekends we leave. We take our camper and go to her house, her mother's house, to get away from our own yard. It's pretty bad. It really is. But then the other thing is, so not only does he get those loads, during the year, he got two loads out of a white dump truck on June 15th. Another load from a white dump truck on September 16th. Another load from a white dump truck on September 19th. Another load on September 28th. So even though he had this big truck, he's up to 30, I don't know, 24 cords plus all that. He's up to a lot. But he shares it with four guys, I guess, is what the deal was, is what he tells the Board of Health. But on June 22nd, when Lisa and Jim Merritt was talking in email, I have the copy of the email, Harry was still insisting that the wood was all for him at June 22nd. So then it went from June 22nd till the police went there. Then it was, well, I'm sharing it with another guy. Then it went back to the Board of Health. Well, I'm sharing it with another guy. So now it's Harry and two guys. Then I go talk to Joe. I said, this was ridiculous. Well, Harry added another guy to the list. He added his son, Shane Perry, who lives at 153 Main Street in Cushinget. He burns three quart a year in a multifamily house. Don't make sense, does it? The other thing I have an issue with, since this wood all went to Barry's house to be cut and split and brought back to Harry's house on October 10th, two more loads of wood being loaded and moved by Harry from Harry's house. December 30th, another load was being moved by Barry McKay heading to Fairhaven on December 30th. So that's why on December 6th, when I went to the Board of Health meeting, all Board members stated that I have a valid complaint and a nuisance. And even stated that is a severe nuisance. But they wanted to come here to the Board and write a letter to the Selectmen Board and see what you guys wanted to do. And that's why I'm here tonight. I don't think that me and my family should be giving up this much enjoyment, quality of my yard, and not even my yard, inside my house. I have videos of in my house. And if anyone would like to see it, I'll play it right now. I have no problems. But it's just ridiculous that why is this man allowed to do that much wood, which I feel is a truthful business? Because I've even had people come to my house and knock on my door and say, can you mind if I back on your property so I can load my truck? So it's a severe issue that I have. And I'm looking for this Board to figure out what we can do to stop it. So I don't get this again.
Mr. Souza?
Yep.
When you was the, when we were discussing it, you had mentioned August. How many days out of the August? What year was that, 2021 or 2022?
2021. And that was, that was right after you got a load. There was 24 days out of the 31 in August. So that means technically I had seven days to enjoy my property. And this ain't going on for like an hour. He comes home at 4:00. He'll go right till 7:00 at night when me and my wife are out on the deck. I have a deck I call the T-deck. I went over and actually asked him to stop so me and my wife could have tea. 10 minutes later, everything started right back up like, oh, well, it's just my neighbor. The other problem I have is every letter he's received from the town, knowing that it is bothering me severely, all he does is keep going. When Joe says, well, I'll let you go from 8:00 to 5:00 or 8:00 to 4:00, he goes from 8:00 to 4:00. Instead of going, hey, let me do a couple of hours, he maxes it out every single day that he can. And who stands for it? I do. No cutting on a Sunday. So we don't cut on a Sunday, but I have to listen to the log splitter, the skid steer, moving all the wood. So when do we get enjoyment? When does me and my wife get to sit on our deck? We were out there on a Sunday morning, wrapped in a blanket with tea, watching the deer in the backyard. Skid steer started up, deer go away. Click. So when do I get to enjoy my yard? I pay $375 a month in taxes. And so far, in one of his affidavits, Harry's affidavits, he says two to three weeks he does this. Last year was seven months. This year, I've been fighting it since April all the way till October. That's not two or three weeks. That's a long time that I'm losing away from my property. It's a full year within two years plus. So I'd just like to see what this Board's intention.
Judging by the amount of hours and days that this is taking up and the amount of wood coming out of here, regardless if it's being sold or not, it's a commercial level operation, in my opinion. Peace of mind? I don't think you deserve that, personally. I think it's excessive. And I'll never tell anybody they can't cut and split their own wood because everybody has a right to heat their homes. But when it gets to the point of excess, I think it's a little overbearing and I don't think it's fair to a person like yourself who would like to enjoy his yard.
So five years ago, before five years ago, I never knew when Harry did his wood. You know why? It becomes incidental. Ah, you go there, you cut for an hour, it's all over. Ah, you go there, cut another hour. I've been cutting wood this year. I started October 21st. To the date, I've only cut a quarter and a half. And I still have better than half the pile of tree length on my ground. I go over there, I cut. As I take it out of my pile, I restack my pile. There's no reason to be doing this six hours a day or two hours a day or three hours a day for seven days a week. There's no reason, unless it's a business or a commercial. I just don't know what to say. I don't know what to do. I've been everywhere. I'm frustrated. I've been to courts. I've been to the Board of Health and they keep telling me it's a nuisance, but no one's willing to stop this guy. Why?
Mr. Jim? Mr. Jim? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Gaspar.
So I've been doing wood for majority of my life, better than 45 years of my lifetime, cutting and splitting wood for myself and my family. Obviously, the saws, I mean, if you're running two or three saws, that's the noise equivalent you're getting. It's obviously very loud and annoying for somebody. I do mine out on a bigger piece of land than what you guys operate on. I've been by your properties to check out the situation. I know what I can cut a quart of wood and basically an hour and a half, I can zip a quart of wood, stand right at it and zipping it and splitting it. My split is automatic reverse. I just hit the handle back, it goes back. I'm hustling wood. Two and a half hours maybe to split, two people to split cords. So you're talking basically four hours to do a cord. The truck. Mr. Perry, you Mr. Perry?
Mr. Perry's not here.
Oh, Mr. Perry's not here?
Nope.
Mr. Perry's bringing in the 10 cord. What I would look at when I seen the picture of that truck, I used to buy those kind of truckloads of wood. They call it a 10 cord truck. It's probably seven and a half, eight cords, depending on the shape of the logs and things of the nature with the spit pockets and anything else. I mean, you burn, most families burn three cords of wood a year if you're a heavy burner.
That's what I do. 24/7, my saw goes.
What a decent sized house, anywhere between, you know, 1,000 and 2,000 square foot home, you can, you burn, if you burn strong, you're burning three, three and a half cords a year, right? If you're burning strong. You know, I look at 10 cords, you're talking 40 hours to do 10 cords. Four hours a cord. That's cut, split, four hours for each cord. So you're talking 40 hours roughly, right? I don't think it would require much more time than 40 hours to cut up that chuckload of wood. 40 hours is what I'm saying. It's unfortunate that you and it seems like Mr. Perry did get along for 30 years, is basically what you said. You used to do it hand and foot with each other. And something triggered apparently where that relationship's broken as neighbors. And that's a really crappy spot to be in when your neighbors and you got along for so long and something else has occurred. I don't know what that trigger was. It's too bad. It seemed like you guys had a pretty decent relationship, working on cars together, doing wood together and things of the like. I don't think that anybody should be cutting wood for 100, 200 hours a season as one person in a yard. And it's not just for yourself if you're doing it that long. So 10 cords of wood, if you have a couple of family members, you're trying to help out. You know, each one gets three cords. You're talking 40 hours. I don't know what else to say. And you know, if, when I do, I cut pallets in my yard. I only live on a 10,000 square foot lot. When I cut pallets for Kiddlin Wood, you know, I'm out there for half an hour, an hour. I zap up some. I always try to be conscientious of my neighbors. If I'm doing it in the summertime and I know my neighbor's having a cookout or whatever, I don't do it. I don't go out there with my saw and do anything, right? You have to be respectful of your neighbors. Unfortunately, that doesn't seem like what's happening here. It's a shame that, you know, people just can't get along and especially with a relationship that you guys had for 30 years.
Nine times in two years, Mr. Gaspar, I went over there to talk to him.
I get it.
I sent him a family letter and everything.
I get it.
I burn wood like you said. You know when my saw starts? October, the end of October. And you just put along through the winter? So your rack's full again by spring and you don't have to do it in the summer.
I mean, you could bang it out in March and April and be done with it and let it season over the summer. I don't go a whole year. I just let it sit in the sun for the summer months and I get a little bit more burn time out of my logs versus letting them sit there for a year. So, and look, again, I'm pretty experienced with the woodcutting business. I'm sure you are for doing it for 30 something years or probably longer. And Mr. Perry, wherever he is, he's been doing it for a long time as well. And, you know, it's, it's pretty clear that this is a business operation. It's not for your personal use. So I would just hope, I don't know what to say to either one of you, but I would just hope that there be some collaboration between the two of you somehow maybe find peace and say, you know what, you know, this is what it is. And if I'm going to cut wood, it's going to be, you know, if I'm doing it on the weekends, maybe it's 8:30 to 11:30 and I'll leave lunchtime alone and maybe start back up and do it for a few hours in the afternoon. And it's only going to be so many days of the year. And it's not going to be, as you said, you know, 30 days straight, whatever month it was. I think it was August. You said it was twenty some odd days straight. I mean, that's, that's clearly you're not doing it for your own personal thing and with all the other months that you have calendared here doing it. I mean, a nuisance is something that the Board of Health, the health agent should be taking that up. I did watch that meeting, would you, um, Mr. Susan being present? Um, I got a phone call, um, about that meeting. So I did watch it and I heard all the noise and I said, Jesus, you know, it's, it's, it's a shame. It really is because I, I, I think that everybody could kind of just do what they need to do, cut some wood. You know, I don't care if I'm doing it for my brother and, and my uncle and, you know, three cords is three cords. And if you don't need any more than three cords, I, I've, I've been around a long time doing this crap. And I don't know anybody that burns five or six cords a year unless they're living in a mansion. And I think if you're living in a mansion, you don't really care about your utility bill, right? So I mean, I know that three is the status quo, good amount for most households to, to get through a winter, um, season. And with, you know, the winter seasons haven't been that rough lately, right? Two thousand fifteen was our last real rough season that we had.
This year, right now, I'm burning one third of what I normally do. I gotta tote. I usually go three to today.
I, the last few years, I haven't burned much at all either. I mean, if you're doing it, I, I know the operation. Your next door neighbor's got a garage, so obviously he's probably got a wood stove in the house, maybe one inside the garage. Okay. So he's only burning the one dwelling. So I mean, and again, it's just, it's something that's, you know. I think Mr. Perry should, you know, be a little bit more considerate to his neighbor. And, and maybe you guys could talk it out and work it out. And then the town doesn't need to be involved anymore. I mean, if, obviously if this individual keeps ripping at it and going at it with, with all that equipment, I wouldn't want to listen to it quite honestly.
Just so you know, last year I went up to him and I said, listen, I'll come here Thursday night with my chainsaw, my own time, and I hope you cut. Please don't cut on Saturdays. That won't work for me. It is what it is. So does anyone think I'm really gonna go over there and talk to him after that? Or when he told my grand, my granddaughter that couldn't stand the smell of the barrel he was burning, that I'm burning my dirty underwear? You think I'm gonna go over there and talk to the guy? I tried and I tried and I tried. I even wrote lettuce. It's like, it ain't working. This guy just does what he wants on his property, thinking everything goes straight up at the property line. It don't. It comes into my property. I have decimal readings over a hundred and three.
I've seen him. It's, it, you know, it's zone residential, right? It's not zone commercial for a reason, right?
I didn't move into this. This moved to us.
That's correct. Um, and that's probably not a, a home business, classified as a home business, right? So, um, yeah, either, either Mr. Perry's gonna have to find if he wants to continue ripping thirty, forty cords of wood. He's, you, you said, I, I think I know the operation. I live off Middle Road. It's right after the police department on the right hand side. Is that the property? The guy cuts wood over there in the back where Sewick's?
No, we're up on Matipoiset Road.
I know where you are. You said you brought wood over to Middle.
Oh, yeah, one fifty-one. I'm sorry.
So I'm, I'm. Perry McAdams, the one, the, the big field in the back down behind Sewick's.
It's more the garage that's underground like. If you're heading toward the school, it's on the left-hand side from Middle Road.
It's so it's not the property that I'm thinking of. But anyways, I mean, if that's, if that's a better place for, for this business to be operated on and nobody else, no neighbors are over there complaining about the operation, maybe that's where it needs to be done and you truck it and do whatever you need to do there. And he does, you know, whatever amount he needs for his home and you do what you need for your home and.
But even after the town lettuce and saying Joe's telling, pulling the move in, and all this work is on my property line, so close. So even though he's not chainsawing or splitting, I gotta hear the bobcat going over there loaded and dumping it into pickup trucks. It's like a never-ending thing with wood. It really is.
Well, I don't think, my point is, I don't think you would need all of that equipment if you just have three to five cords of wood sitting on your own property for your own well-being, right?
I agree.
So I, I, I think that, you know, the, the town, if they need to send Mr. Perry a letter saying that it's not business owned and you can't be doing it over there in X amount of time. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm always, I look at it from my own perspective and I don't want anybody telling me when to get my chainsaw out. I'm just conscientious of what's going on in my neighborhood because I'm on small ten thousand square foot lots. And if I know somebody's got company over, I'm not going out. I can see the cars don't belong there that are usually in that driveway and I just leave it alone, right? So, you know, it's trying to be a good neighbor. That's what you do. Um, apparently your good neighbors turn into not so good of a neighbor when it comes to you at least anyway. I don't know, Mr. Perry, I'd be more than happy to try to go out there and talk to him myself and see what, what we could come up with. But, you know, everybody's got the right to do so, so much within their property bounds, right?
I understand.
And I think that you do understand that.
Yep.
Um, but when you're telling me that a homeowner is ripping thirty, forty cords of wood, that's not personal use anymore. So.
So the other thing is, is I don't believe in anything verbal at all. I mean, it has to be a letter. I wanna see it in black and white. Joe gave him verbals over the summer and all it did was get tucked up my butt. Cause like I said, Joe would say, oh, be courteous to your neighbor, see if he's home. But Harry would never. He'd go out there. If Joe said he could start at eight thirty, that chainsaw started at eight thirty. If he said he could work till four, he worked till four o'clock at it. So it's not, and Joe's like, well, I told him to be nice, be respectful. But you still gave him the hours, such a big window that he does what he wants.
It's not business zoned. I, I would hope that Mr. Perry can come to the conclusion after everything you've been through, going to the Board of Health, coming to the Board of Selectmen, he's probably watching the meeting or is gonna watch the meeting and see what goes on. And perhaps there's some people in the audience that are gonna go back and talk to him or whatever. Um, I would hope that he comes to the conclusion that he can't run a business out of his residential home. Um, but I'm also not gonna tell somebody, um, that they pay taxes on that property. You can't run a chainsaw or auto wood splitter. There's times of day that you have to do this. And it's not all day and all night. And it's not every day and every weekend, right? So if, if, if they don't get the picture, then maybe the town's gonna have to take action and, and more enforcement will have to come down, right?
Well, I mean, can we get him a letter stating exactly what you said? I mean, I'm telling you, I don't wanna see a verbal. This has been back and forth. And then I go to Joe and I'm like, well, what's the verbal? Well, I kinda told him this. So then I went to the chief of police and the chief was like, well, that ain't what Joe told me. This is what Joe told me. So it's like when we have verbals, nothing gets said. When the police department came over to me, he's like, well, I think it's this. I said, we ain't got a letter? And he says, no, nothing's written. So everything was a question. When is the real start time? When is the real stop time? When is this can take place? So on a verbal that everyone might have a different aspect of the verbal, I don't think it works. I really think that it should be hardcore, hard written.
All right. So Mr. Susan, this is what I can do for sure right now. I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the new building inspector, Mr. Bobola, to investigate and decide whether or not this commercial operation is happening at one eighty-one Matipoiset Road. So that'll give him a chance to write the letter if there is. Either way, he'll be in the loop and now we can officially.
Are you gonna give this package to him?
And also are you gonna give this?
Yes, everything you got here, I will make sure he has a copy. So that would be my motion is to authorize the new building inspector, Mr. Bobola, to investigate a possible non, non-licensed commercial operation on Matipoiset Road for wood cutting.
Like you said, Mr. Gaspar.
I'll second that. Hold on, although the motion being made and motion just been seconded.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Votes unanimous.
All I'm gonna say is I'm not looking to take anyone's right away. That guy wants to burn three cord, have at it, cut it, split it, have fun with it. But what he's doing is not.
No, I, I, I totally get it. I mean, I, I also have a dirt bike and that could be pretty loud too. So. I mean, I, I do some noisy things at my house, but I always try to be conscientious of my neighbors. And I don't do things when, when I know everybody's out trying to have a good time. And I don't do things late at night. And I don't, I try not to do things because I know my neighbors have animals and that, that screws with the animals and makes them miserable. I have a dog. He doesn't like certain things happening, right? And it's just, it's one of those things you all try to just be navally. And hopefully everybody can just get along and, and everybody will live a peaceful life. I mean, that's what.
I have a neighbor that has the loudest lawnmower I've ever heard in my life. But when he starts it up, you know what I say? Thirty-five minutes, he'll be done. That's what I say. I don't go outside saying, I can't believe he's cutting his lawn with that thing. I say, well, thirty-five minutes, he'll be done. This has no ending. It's like even when he told Joe in August that I'm all done, it went all the way to October eighth, where my granddaughter couldn't even play outside. So.
So Mr. Susan, I will, I thank you for coming in. I appreciate that. And I will get all this information over to Mr. Bobola. And we'll explain the motion and what has to happen. And we'll keep you in the loop, obviously. Once it's a, a motion and there's a written letter, you'll have a copy of that as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry for your inconvenience.
Right. Next item, introduction, Mr. Derek Hill, the new CEO of PJ Keating, Mr. Hill. Thank you for, uh, for coming in. First of all, for those of you who don't know, Mr. Hill, he was nice enough to furnish, furnish us with a bio, uh, really impressive, uh, work history, um, some nonprofit, uh, work as well. Um, by way of introduction, I know you've met Mr. Gaspar, David Bonar. This year I happen to be the chairman of the board. It's a rotating, uh, situation.
Bob Ankle.
And you know Jamie Kelly. Um, look, I don't need to go into the past, right? That's being dealt with separately via litigation. Again, as you saw tonight, you know, quality of life issues obviously get to a point with people. And so, but that said, your new role, I thought it was important to invite you in, um, to introduce yourself, uh, to the board um, in this capacity. Um, you know, we do have a separate soil board that Mr. Gaspar is currently the chairman of. Um, but, you know, again, this is an opportunity for you to hopefully, we can try to reset this, um, relationship. PJ Keating has been in town for many years. It's unfortunate and disappointing that we're at this point. Um, but that said, you know, the floor is yours, uh, for a few minutes, just to say hello.
Great. Well, thanks for inviting, inviting me. My name is Derek Hill. Uh, and I am the president, not the CEO, the president of, uh, PJ Keating. Um, we're located in really pretty much predominantly four locations in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. Uh, we have about two hundred seventy-five employees, uh, throughout that. They're all union paid jobs. They're all really good income jobs. Um, at peak operation, uh, in a cushion, we had about forty-five full-time union, uh, employees. Uh, that was drastically reduced down to less than a handful while we ran the asphalt plant. But, uh, my history is I'm pretty much, I'm a lifer of CRH. So I was going to college at the time, working for a company in New England Pike Industries, mainly Hampshire and Vermont. Um, and I worked there in college, uh, and CRH bought Pike Industries in nineteen eighty-eight. Um, I was actually part of the, uh, um, I did a lot of due diligence and, uh, acquisition work for the organization uh, back when, uh, back in the nineties and late nineties. Um, and then, uh, in my last six years, so prior to coming to take the Keating operation over in January of this year, I worked six years at the corporate office, which is our Atlanta office. Um, we, we are located in, um, forty-six of the fifty states in the United States and then, uh, and then, and then Canada. So the North Americas was my territory, worked a lot on performance, organic growth of the business, kind of balanced scorecards sort of the things, as well as mergers, mergers and acquisitions, change management. So that's what I did the prior, uh, six years before coming to Keating. Um, and then prior to that, I, uh, I worked various roles from, from, uh, my high school or my college days, working from a laborer up to vice president of, um, of the construction business for, um, for Pike Industries. Um, so essentially a CRH lifer, I guess, you know, as my brother in the software business says, I'm a bit of a dinosaur. There are not a lot of people that stay in a business over thirty-five years, um, particularly in corporate America. But, um, and it's a testament to CRH, in my opinion. Um, and, and the fact that I've been to all of our companies throughout the United States. You know, we have core values and the pillars of that is community, community engagement, community relations. Um, it's important for us, it's very important for me that we have a working relationship with our town. To your point, you know, if we live life looking through the rearview mirror, we're gonna end up in the ditch. So I don't really wanna speak to what has happened here. Um, but where we are now, we've got to think about how do we get to yes and how do we, how do we move, move forward? The construction industry is vital to the, not only to just the South Coast, but infrastructure in a, in a whole, to the, to the mass economy, to the Rhode Island economy. Um, and the Acushnet facility has always been a vital link towards progress and economic growth and development of the, of the South Coast. So, um, that's important. And as I said, you know, the economic benefits of that facility at the time, we were upwards of forty-five full-time employees, union employees, those are six-figure, those are six-figure salaries with full benefits, pensions. And when all of this happened, you know, those careers ended and they had to find a different way of life. So. With that, you know, I, I do think, you know, CRH, you know, we have a proven track record across the United States with our, with the development of our properties, um, working with our communities. And then ultimately working on the final end state of a property. It's really difficult to sit here and say, what is the best use of a property fifty years out, thirty years out? Because things are changing so fast. But, um, we do know that there's, there's a high-end state for those, those sort of things. And, and that, that really should be a partnership with the community and the business as we think about those things. And then obviously that needs to be documented, right? But we have, um, some great examples over the years of, um, we've taken the quarries out in Rochester, New York, golf courses. Other places, um, even in Massachusetts, um, you'll see, and it was actually in the, in the packet submitted, um, Biogen used the quarry itself to use, uh, geothermal pumps to cool and heat the building, uh, based on that. So they created an industrial park. So there's, you know, all of those different things that come from end use, um, of, of, of quarries. And obviously it's a large tract of land. Um, you have some landlocked land out there as well, um, and so does the town fair here. So, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of opportunity in the property. Um, obviously our core business is, um, aggregates, hot mixed asphalt. And we supply the aggregates to the ready mix company that is also on our property, LNS. So, I mean, with that, I could certainly answer any questions or.
No, no, thank you. I think you just being here, I think is really, um, important, you know? The relationship is the fine print of any contract. It's the fine print of any permit. Um, and trust is really important, right? Um, I think what's really unfortunate is we're a town of, of, of not a lot of means. And we've spent, I think north of a quarter of a million dollars on legal fees, trying to do our best to protect the health and welfare of the residents. And what's a quarter of a million dollars? Well, those are resources that we're not putting into the community, right? Improving streets or hiring police officers or, or so. There's a couple of playbooks. You know, you could take the traditional playbook and just grind it, grind it, grind it. And the town will cry, have to cry uncle because we don't have the money. But I'm hoping it doesn't come to that and that we can come to some type of resolution that allows you to operate your business in a way that is respectful. And I'm hoping that this would be a comeback story where PJ Keating really doubles down, not on the legal fees, but doubles down on the community and invests in that portion of the town. You know, we've got a state highway that runs through, through Acushnet. I personally, I feel like that's been an impediment to economic development in the town. We've got opportunities to beautify that area and I'm hoping that if this goes well, that PJ Keating could be part of that. But at the end of the day, we're all committed to protecting the health and welfare of the residents. And so that's why I asked you to come in here is to hear that emotional appeal.
Yeah.
Is that we're running out of money to, to carry out this legal battle. And it doesn't help anybody. Um, and that's money that we're taking out of the pockets of our residents. And we could be using to invest in the community that we're not doing. So I wanted to share that with you. And I'm hoping that moving forward, we'll be able to, um, come up with some type of resolution.
And I would like to just re-extend the offer to not only the, the Board of Selectmen, but also, uh, the Board of Health. Uh, back, back at the end of November, I actually, um, wrote a letter to Board of Health and the Selectmen to say, hey, we'd, we'd be happy to show you the improvements we've done. We've, we've spent, uh, in capital over two and a half million dollars dealing with noise and dust suppression on the, um, and guarding around the, uh, aggregate processing facility. And, uh, we had our, um, the manufacturer of our asphalt plant, Aztec Industries, came out in August. We did an audit with them. They brought us kind of best practices around managing blue smoke. Um, and we implemented all of those best practices by enclosing the, um, the asphalt plant loadout area. And, and we're upgrading the blue smoke package as well. And we still have a few more things to do. We're waiting for their design, um, which would, uh, in the liquid tanks, uh, when we fill a tank, that it kind of burks, right? Because you're, you're, you're discharging liquid in, so you're filling up the vertical silo. So there's a, and we have a charcoal, um, device on the top, but what we're gonna do is, uh, the design kind of best prep, best available control technology, we would capture that as well and put that down into the blue smoke suppression package. That it's basically a giant bag house with the, with all of these filters and, and that's another piece of maintenance, right? So there's a dust, there's a, a bag house to manage dust, fugitive emissions from the processing of, of hot mixed asphalt. But the blue smoke package is a separate package, which is taking the, that fume odor and bringing it down through a set, a system of filtration. So we've got that work to do, but the enclosure itself is done at this time. We have a truck wash system that's in place at the scales. So as trucks would come onto this, onto the, onto the scale from say getting loaded with aggregate, those wheels are getting washed, which reduces the sweeping. And, and we've been committed to making sure that we have a sweeper, um, on South Main Street when we're active.
One, just a couple of things. One, again, I appreciate that update. And I mean, I guess I will just say retroactively, your predecessors have taken the mindset of, well, we've been here for over a hundred years. We've got the right, you know, so on and so forth. And I get that. But I think we can all admit that the bill, the business has evolved from where it was a hundred years ago, right? And so I think moving on from that mindset, uh, I think would be really important. And then also be great for you to share with us, you know, through the Soil Board, examples of what you've done in other communities. We need, you know, like, what have you done in some of these communities where you operate to show that you are good stewards of the neighborhoods? Because we'd love to see that, you know, we've, Keating, PJ Keating from back to where it's Tilcon, had always been, you know, part of the community whenever we needed him to do something was there. I feel like it's kind of fallen off and obviously because of the legality stuff, but hopefully that's something that, um, you guys would, you know, take a look at as well. So that's all I have to say. You know, I don't wanna belabor this, but again, this is, we'll have an opportunity to talk business through the Soil Board. That, that'll be a process for that, but I think this is really helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to just say, you know, actions speak louder than words. I, I think we all know that, right? And, um, you know, clearly, you know, I was, some of the most rewarding pieces of this year was to watch the team rally around. Uh, we did a food drive and we did, uh, and then we did a, we, we sponsored the breakfast here for the, at the Council of Aging. And we didn't just do that in a cushion. I, I, you can go to Cranston. In Cranston, we raised eight hundred and forty pounds of food, uh, over five hundred dollars in cash. And then Keating, what we did was match. So we spent, uh, we, we put twenty-five hundred dollars into the food, food banks of the four, uh, four areas where we work. Um, and then our, our employees stuffed all the, all the elderly stocking stuffers. And I think, you know, the, the feedback I got from my employees was, was the tremendous amount of pride and satisfaction they had in just giving back, right? And to me, that has always been a core foundational element of me. And that's probably my upbringing from my parents. But, but in the end, that's really where I think our, our CRH companies really excel. And I, I hope that, you know, I'm not here with words and I just hope that, you know, we get the opportunity to show our actions are, are, are stronger than our words.
Good job. Yeah, no, I mean, I've only got an opportunity to speak with Mr. Hill a couple of times, but, uh, he, he's a good man. Um, he's very well educated in the industry and I, you know, actions always speak louder than words, right? So the reality of it is, is I'll, I'll take that opportunity, they go out to the facility and look at all the upgrades that you've done. I'm familiar with most of them that you have been done because I've been doing this for a while now with PJ Keating. Um, but it, it's all about results, right? We can, we can look at curtains. You can look at the grids over the, over the conveyor belts. Um, that was one of my recommendations. They, they used to be there. Um, Rob Robinson actually listened to it, spoke to the people that needed to, started getting those, those covers back over the, for the conveyors for the dust. But, you know, I also listened to my residents. I spent a lot of time in that neighborhood, driving around, um, and speaking with the residents. And, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't know what improvements you've done yet in, in the results that they're gonna, um, produce. I hope that they're satisfactory to the abutters and the residents in that general area. And even people communicating up and down, um, South Main Street over here. I've heard it from people not just residing in that side of town. So it's, you know, the big issue back in the day, a couple of years ago, when this all started was the dust. Um, and there was a lot of dust getting into that neighborhood. So, you know, and then deodorant, obviously from the asphalt plant and things of the like. So again, it's actions speak better than words. We can all talk a big game, but it's about the result in the end. And, and I hope that the, the money that PJ Keating has spent, um, we're gonna get good results from that. You're talking about purifiers now for the asphalt plant, things of the like. Um, I'll go out there and look at it and, and, you know, I, I give you a lot of credit. I mean, you weren't even hesitant to meet with me when we talked about the two forty bypasses as an option to get some of the trucks off the road. So, you know, I look forward to that opportunity to engage with PJ Keating and, and hopefully we can come to a resolution. As Selectman Bonner said, I, I think it's in the party's interest here to come to some kind of resolution. But ultimately there'll never be a resolution if the people of Acushnet can't breathe clean air. But that's really what this is all about.
Yep. Thank you. You've said it very well. Um, I look forward to going down and checking out the improvements as well. Twenty twenty-three is my year for, uh, self-reflection and, uh, I'm trying to go into it as a positive outlook on everything. So I'm looking forward to moving forward and, uh, working with you guys and resolving any issues we might have and really getting to work. And I thank you for coming. It's very nice of you to come down here without even worrying about it. Pop right in. It's respectable and I appreciate that.
No problem. And, you know, we look forward to the working sessions that are ahead. We know they're not gonna always be easy, be straight up, right? You know, but we, you know, the goal for both things should be global, global agreement, long-term agreement and some sort of, you know, something that, that comes, we come to yes on, right? Ultimately, we have to come to yes, or we'll still be paying legal fees.
Right. Let me just think about it. If we're, if we're into it for a quarter of a million, you guys would probably run the same. It's $500,000, give or take a few, that we could be investing maybe in the community. Right? I mean, that's the truth of it all. Anyway.
Well, thank you, sir. Well, thank you. Take care.
Mr. Legia, nice to see you as well.
You as well, Mr. Gaspar. I'm sure the lawyers don't mind the fees, but you get the
He was here just to keep it tightly shut.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Here's my agenda. Too many, too many papers that look alike. All right. Next item, a little bit behind. We do have a 6:00 PM meeting with the Finance Committee, so hopefully, we'll make that. Fire Chief, is Chief Fallon here?
Yes.
I am.
Chief, do you hear me, Chief?
So the first thing that is on your agenda for me to discuss, I believe it's called the fire call rates. Just real briefly, minimum wage increased on January 1st. So I did a little investigation into how we compensate some of our call fire recruits. In addition, I have studied and proposed some adjustments to the call officer wage schedule. But at this time, I'm requesting that be tabled until the next meeting to give us time to discuss potential changes and requests in executive session. So we can come to a better, more complete package to present to you guys.
Okay. I think this is gonna require some further scrutiny on our end. And we'll have to, you know, it's kind of, I don't want to say it's a negotiation, but I think, you know, we'll have to do some research and
Absolutely. It would be convenient in executive session if we, if we want to
Does he have a motion?
Approve that. So a motion we can put on the agenda for the next meeting and go into executive session to discuss. And then we'll revert back to you on that one.
So moved.
Second. The motion is the second. All of them.
All right. And then next item is we've got to ratify our fire collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Gaspar, I'll turn that over to you. Are you the lead negotiator?
Yeah, so it was probably the most pleasurable negotiations that I've ever had. We did it in a record amount of meetings. I think it was only three meetings that we resolved all the outstanding issues, thanks to Mr. Kelly and Chief Fallon. I know that Mr. Fallon and I had a go-around. The last time, he was on the other side as the union steward.
I am kind of jealous of how easy this one went.
So we, we had our go-around then, when we were merging the two departments, Fire and EMS came together under the old chief. But we, you know, we worked hard at, at the process back then, Mr. Fallon and I did and, and other members, obviously. But coming into this one, having Mr. Kelly's experience with his human, obviously, his background being very strong in human resources, he was able to do a meeting with, with the reps, the stewards this time around, get all the language changes that needed to be put through for the legal reasons. So that was a great help for me. I didn't have to sit through that one meeting because I had some other things that I had to take care of. So I want to thank Mr. Kelly for taking care of all that stuff. There really isn't much here. We rolled a few stipends in, and the reason why we rolled a few stipends in is pretty much, last time around, we kind of just missed it. It was kind of set up as a stipend package. But after speaking with the chief and Mr. Kelly, it's a requirement of the job. So basically, what we just did is, you know, you don't, you don't have, you have to have the certification in order to do the job. So why would we be paying it in a stipend? We just rolled it into the hourly rate. It's common sense. There was one other one that we did in there with quality assurance. But Chief Fallon, again, brought it to our, and Mr. Kelly brought it to my attention that you can't do that kind of language because it's technically, the state would consider it punitive and not under the fail labor practices. Is that correct, that we could be having that language? So we struck all of that out. We basically rolled that in. Not much. I think it was a thousand bucks on the quality assurance that we came to terms of agree on. And the rest is just a bunch of really language changes. The first year is zero, 1,500 from Apple, two and two. So again, I, I can't commend the members of the union enough how gracious they were in getting this, this back to, to the Board of Selectmen. So we have something to ratify and go to town meeting with and get these people paid what they deserve to be paid. So I, I can't commend the department. Fire, both Fire and EMS, the men and women that worked there, truly commendable, in my opinion, to get this done. And Mr. Kelly was, you know, it's, it's always a great advantage having somebody with Mr. Kelly's experience on your side as well. So get to everybody. I just want to thank them all. Chief Fallon, you are incredible. Mr. Kelly, thank you very much for making this such an easy task for once on me. And all the members of Fire and EMS, just truly incredible venture.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to ratify the Fire Collective Bargaining Agreement?
Fire and EMS, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, you have in your packet the redline version, so you can see the changes.
Okay.
Once I will then print up the copy to be signed, forward it to the union. The union will then forward it to us and at a subsequent time in the office, the members can come and sign because you've already ratified it and then it goes to town meeting.
Great.
This, as Mr. Gaspar said, the heavy lifting was done in the last contract. And I commend the board, the town and the union. This was one of the most enjoyable negotiations I've had in 25 years of doing this. So I appreciate it. And I also think it's one of the fairest contracts I've seen in a long time.
Okay.
And it brings your employees not to the top of the comparable rates, but you're in the middle. And so hopefully, you'll be able to keep your employees that you have now here for a long time and they'll make a career of it in Acushnet.
Excellent. Very nice.
Exactly.
All right. Next item, under new business, Council on Aging Board of Directors Appointment, Joan Howland. Motion to appoint.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carries. Lakeville, Town of Lakeville Animal Shelter Contract. Is there a motion to approve that agreement?
Motion to approve contract with Lakeville Animal Shelter.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, Library Part-Time Employee Appointment, Mary Ellen Logan. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we've had some changes in staffing at the library. The library director has dealt with me. We've discussed it. And there was interviews were conducted and I recommend that this for your approval.
Motion to appoint Mary Ellen, Mary Ellen Logan?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. I see Dr. Boucher there. I know we're not meeting until 6:00, but this conversation that we're about to have about some of our deficits, overtime deficits, I think is probably timely that you're here. So we will start off from the top. We had already alluded to some of the legal challenges that we're dealing with with PJK. Mr. Kelly, where are we with that?
We asked for a breakdown from KP Law on the PJK costs. We've got a breakdown. When I reviewed it, I did not think it was correct. I sent some inquiries back to KP Law and they are revising the data. And they're going to break it down in a manner that I think is more understandable.
Okay.
So we're waiting for that to come back.
All right. Okay. These are overtime. Well, why don't we do this? I've got it fifth on the agenda, just so we keep it all like coordinated. Gentlemen, Mr. Kelly has provided for us an RFP for legal services. I don't know, I've had a chance to look at it essentially. This would, you know, we've been dealing with KP Law and we know what we're dealing with. They're a great outfit. They provide a great service to the town, but it's always good to go out to bid and see what else is out there. Maybe forces everybody to sharpen their pencils. I've looked at the RFP. I'm not gonna monkey around with it too much. That's what we paid Mr. Kelly. Gentlemen, I don't know if you have any additions or deletions. If not, I would ask that we authorize the RFP, vote on it and put it out to bid.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Killed 30 seconds for you.
Thank you. All right. Now we can get into the juicy stuff. Overtime accounts, we've got Chief Richmond here. I'm gonna go
She's super good, I mean, I
They're gonna pull
If you want to start with them.
What's that?
They've been here longer than me. If you want to start with them, I don't mind.
Who has the biggest story to tell?
Probably me.
Exactly save you the last. So we'll go with Dan first. How's that? I think Dan's
Hey, Chief, probably.
All right, Dan, what's, what's going on in your end?
I'm sure it's, it's probably all of us. I mean, I still got money left in my overtime account. It's actually roughly $4,000 left in that. We did
What did we budget? What did we start with?
25.
Okay.
Again, we still waiting for one employee. We still haven't, you know, filled a position yet. So it's kind of more, because we're not, I don't have enough guys to get what I need done. A lot of it was paving. We did a lot of paving in the, in the summer, over the summer. The other stuff was kind of getting our sanders ready. We did a lot of overtime as well for that, getting that stuff. Actually, we haven't been the last few weekends and stuff. We're caught up on all our trucks and stuff and I'm hoping for the best. I mean, if something happens, something happens, but I don't see anything, you know, any hurricanes or anything. Hopefully not coming or nothing major that we have to worry about, so.
Oh, call for a hurricane right now, bud.
And I do, I mean, you, you were asking about like reserve fund transfers, which I usually, I'm gonna have definitely some money left over in that salary line item. I don't know if that's an option to take some of that. If it did happen, if I did wind up using that $4,000, then I'd have that money available to, to get, you know, paid at overtime. So I won't be looking for anything. I usually don't. Usually I mind the
So here's what I would ask, gentlemen, is that, Dan, as you're getting down to the, you know, bottom of the barrel, you know, I guess winter time, snowing out here, let's just
Yep.
Look at that there. Just really work closely with Mr. Kelly
Okay.
To make sure that we don't blow through that money. We just make decisions, you know, if it rains Saturday, whatever, like just work closely with Mr. Kelly on that. And then it's this way, the board can either help or not, you know? Like, we just don't want to be in a situation where all of a sudden, we, we find out after the fact that we've blown through the forebrand, right? So
Snowing, for overtime, Dan mentioned the snow and ice. I mean, that, that, the overtime that we do there, that comes out of snow and ice. That's a different
Right, that's a different, that's a different
So that's that. And, you know, I, like Dan said, I mean, we're down one guy out on injury that he's been missing. And with paving, the amount of more paving that he's been doing, based on the shortage of labor, he's starting the day off a little bit earlier because of the way the asphalt plant, you have to hustle off to Rochester and then get things done. And you can't just stop in the middle of the day. It's 3:00, we're out of here. He's gotta finish up the strip. So it did eat up some of his overtime, so, you know, hopefully, he's gonna continue to manage his overtime.
All well spent. I mean, it's worth, it's what you did this fall, you know, paving is worth it, right? It's just a matter of, I think we should just have some institutional controls in place and we're not, whether it's your own department, fire, police, anybody who's dealing with overtime. So we're not finding out about it after the fact, after the, the accounts have been depleted and putting things in place so we can manage it. Just no different than we do our household budgets, so circuit breakers.
Mr. Chairman, you're going to have in the spring cleanup and all that. And so that's the concern.
Well, I do got, I do got more paving at Top Coat to do over there on, we had at Clifford, we did that drainage project. So I got some more paving to do in the spring. I do got drainage stuff to do. Mend the road, I finally get my manholes and stuff in for that as well. So again, that's, I mean, if we can't do it, we can't do it. It is what it is. So that's something, because that, once you're out there on those projects like that, even that drainage jobs, it's, it's hard to finish in the, in an eight-hour day when you get out there and you
No, no issue there. I just want to make sure that's coordinated. The town administrator will then can coordinate with us if it requires a reserve fund transfer or if we're gonna dip into some other account. It's fine. We just want to make sure that you're not just off doing your thing and then we find out about it after the fact, you know? Not to micromanage, just to help manage.
Yep.
With paving, Dan, I don't, I don't think that overtime, we have that line item for road paving.
Yep.
So I think that we could pay from that line item as well for road paving, some of that overtime. So it's not like We're not doing overtime every time we're out paving.
Correct.
Just because the pavement's out doesn't mean we're overtime. There's just certain projects, like Matapoisa Road was a big project, right? And that probably ate up a good chunk of your overtime line item
Correct.
Was Matapoisa Road, because I was out there several times and you guys had to start early, end 6:30, 7:00 o'clock. So, meaning the rest of this calendar year, you have that money in road paving. So if we need to supplement, instead of taking it from overtime line item, we could be paying that out of the road paving line item, so much of it anyway, right? Help out.
Good.
All right. That's out.
Thanks, Dan.
Good.
Thanks for your time, guys. Hopefully, we don't have any snow.
See you tomorrow.
And I think, Dan, Jamie's gonna reach out to us to try to get together Friday morning around 8:30, if you're good.
Okay. Tomorrow, we
10:30.
10:30.
All right. See you guys tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we will go with Chief Fallon in the fire department.
I had Lisa distribute to you guys yesterday a memo, a quick memo that I wrote up. Currently, Fire Department's overtime line item is in a $36,000 deficit as of this last payroll. There are a couple of reasons for that. Upon doing some studying, when I took over back in July, I noticed that based on the projected number of contractual hours off, there was some underfunding in that line item. So that kind of hamstrung us a little bit. But since then, we've had a turnover of employees. We spent a significant amount of time, short-staffed on the full-time side. We had one employee, one of our members, go to the academy for 10 weeks. So we were covering his shifts while he was at the academy doing his training. weeks, so we were covering his shifts while he was at the academy doing his training. We also had probably four or five of our part-time EMS employees that are in nursing programs with VCC and UMass, so their hours that they could commit to us drastically reduced. Since then, we've been able to bring in the full-time staff, we've been able to bring in some new part-time employees as well to make up those holes. So moving forward, I'm hoping that we've quelled it, there's still about eighteen thousand contractually between now and the end of the fiscal year that our members still have in vacation time and personal time to take off. However, with all of that on the other line items of the salary, we have a minimum of a fifty-four thousand dollar surplus. So as of right now, projecting that we'll be able to cover whatever deficit we end up with, with that surplus, barring, knock on wood, anything really drastically negative happening.
Okay. Gentlemen, anything, I mean, again, same, the message is the same, right? Just work hand in glove with town administrator, make sure that there's constant coordination so then we can make decisions on coverage, whatever, but, you know, public safety is really important.
And not to kind of pile on, but last year, calendar year twenty-twenty-two was our busiest year ever, we did almost sixteen hundred calls for service, most of those were ambulance-related, including just from when I took over in July until the end of December, we committed an ambulance to a different community other than ours, a hundred and eighteen times, but we didn't drop the ball in our own town, we only had a mutual aid ambulance come in nine different times in that same amount of time. So we're able to, those times where we have concurrent calls, where both ambulances are being used, we're picking up on that, so we're not losing that revenue to other communities, but we're also being able to provide that assistance, bring our call numbers up, and bring that excess revenue into our.
Is the rates, our mutual aid rates, are those in alignment with like what it actually costs, or is that set, how is that, I recall years ago, we did something like in the city of Bedford and Beaverton, like how is that rate set?
As far as like the number or the.
Yeah, so when we're doing all those mutual aid calls, what is, what's that rate? Like how are we getting reimbursed for that?
We bill directly through whatever medical or automobile insurance it is, depending on the call, if it's a car accident, it's through automobile. Whoever transports that patient does the billing, so if we, if they come in our ambulance, our billing agency, ComStar, is the one that sends out the bill and we recover that revenue.
Is it factored in, like the travel time, so is there some type of formula? So for instance, if we're going to a neighboring community, which the mileage is further than what it would be within our own town limits.
Yeah, so the way that, the way that the ambulance billing is, is it's based off of the Medicare rate. We, Chief Gallagher, last spring raised them, so we're not in a position to alter them at this point. We're actually right around where everybody else in our area is. So it's a set rate that Medicare says, we can charge private insurances so many percent above, which we do, and the only variation on that is the mileage. So each ambulance call on average, the bill that gets generated is roughly twenty-four hundred dollars, and then the mileage increases by whatever Medicare says we charge.
So why, what was, where do we, where are we providing the most mutual aid to?
City of Bedford.
Okay.
And the town of Beaverton, those two.
So my question is, why is that? They just don't have the capacity to do it?
There are a couple of reasons. Since COVID, three years ago, everybody's call numbers are up, if we take mutual aid out of it, our run numbers are actually still increased as well, we're just doing that much more because we're helping those communities out. There is, as COVID's gone on and as times have changed, there is, and we saw it last fall, there is some kind of decline in the number of providers that are out there, so that plays a role in it and how they can staff themselves, but for the most part, it's just there's that many people calling nine-one-one that they get, their systems get taxed.
So I get where I'm going with this, is if we're providing that service, which I'm all for, and I think that's great, and, you know, something we've done, and yes, we're getting reimbursed, you know, by the Medicaid, you know, by that formula, and ComStar, whatever, but like, is there some other charge that we could be administering to the municipality above and beyond that rate, right? Because it's wear and tear on our vehicles, it's, you know, I kind of feel like we're doing this.
I would have to explore that, but I do know in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that communities are required to sign mutual aid agreements.
And that's what I like, maybe we can pull those mutual aid agreements.
I don't think there can be any cost accrued to that.
If we can look at that, because I just want to make sure that what we're doing is, yes, from a humanitarian standpoint is the right thing to do, but also from a business standpoint, because I just want to make sure that, and I don't think so, but like I say, the city of New Bedford is saying, you know, instead of us staffing up, we'll just rely on a cushion to do it.
They have six ambulances around the clock, and they, on a regular basis, call us for Haven and Free Town and Dartmouth, and, because they're just that busy, they're just that busy with calls.
Maybe they need twelve, maybe they need twenty, right? So it's like, if they're not, if they're making a business decision to not invest and to build up, knowing that Town of a Cushion or other municipalities will pick up the slack for them, right? You know, I just want to make, maybe we should need to dive into it, and if there's a, you know, an opportunity to recoup additional funds, then I think we should look at that, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I think we should at least take a look at it, right?
We made pretty good bank, that's what our EMS reserve receipt account accumulated, cash, that was like a half a million bucks, right?
We're well over that now.
So this call, the budget's a million, and we make, we're self-sufficient by like sixty percent, I think it comes out to, so like six hundred thousand?
Yeah, we bring in, the last two fiscal, the last two fiscal years, the department's brought in over six hundred thousand dollars each fiscal year.
And we've had, we've had some residents, Kushner residents, I know, I've dealt with a few of them, over ambulance, the cost of ambulance billing, so it's just, and when it comes to that, the mutual aid thing, I'm sure that the chief, with the other chiefs from the surrounding towns that were in mutual aid, they have their meetings and they're going to, we can only do X amount, you know, we can't get to this point, and what's going to be really dangerous, if a town, a city decided to take that option, like you were laying on, and I agree with that option that you're talking about, makes a lot of sense, but God forbid, they went down that route and we weren't there to cover it, and somebody was to lose their life because of it, they would be on the hook and that's, you know, on them and not on us.
I'm all for providing mutual aid, I just want to make sure that we are making sure that we are recouping every dollar that our taxpayers are paying for, that are investing in this department, and if the business model is antiquated, and it requires us to negotiate or do a mutual aid agreement that recognizes that we'll get a hundred dollars per call in addition to what's being reimbursed, because that doesn't come out of the municipality, right? It all comes out of the insurance. So when we do a couple, when we cover a call in a.
Our cost, yes.
Yeah, right, so when we.
But if we were to build them an additional charge that would come out of aid.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right? So like, if we're doing all these runs, and I just, you get where I'm coming, right? So, anyway, okay, thank you. Next up, Chief Richmond. We do, so you're kind of lucky, Chief, we've got a six o'clock with the finance committee, so make it quick.
I've, no, I've been instructed. I've been instructed. I sent over a document, about two and a half pages, I sent it over late this afternoon with Mr. Kelly, I'm not going to go through that word for word, that's more or less a, just an overview of everything that brought us in a situation that we're in now, and I think it was just good to put it all in one, in one document, I'll actually share it with Dr. Boucher and the Finance Committee, just so they can kind of see how everything's laid out. Where we're at on the overtime is, this last pay period, like Chief Fallon, we've exhausted our overtime line item by about twenty thousand dollars. There's no end in sight, really, you know, to us spending overtime, it's, we don't have the luxury to say, hey, all right, well, we're going to, we're going to close on Fridays and save money and things of that nature. The overtime that we are spending is to put the minimum number of officers on the road, we're not putting four, five, six, seven people on the road, we're putting three officers on the road, we have one person answer the phone, that's what the overtime's being spent on, because as we've talked about, you know, going on, well, about a year now, you know, staffing, and we're addressing staffing, but unfortunately, the hiring process for us is cumbersome, and it takes time. Some positives, where we're, you know, like I said, we're in a deficit, that we do have some monies, we do have a forty thousand dollar grant from E-911, Enhanced 911, from the state that we can use to recoup salaries by dispatches, so we will be able to bring forty thousand dollars in that way. The school department, toward the end of the fiscal year, will transfer in their forty percent share of the school resource officer's salary, that's about thirty-one thousand dollars. And if there's any positive of being understaffed for as long as we have, the regular salaries line item is heavy. By my count, through this last payroll, the numbers I got from Finance today, which would include last payroll, we're about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over in regular salaries right now. So combine all that together, we're about one ninety, one ninety-nine, that we have money that's, will come in, is there, or will come in before the end of the fiscal year. A couple, one other positive is, we have a new hire that had the academy that we, the board appointed back in the end of November, she's actually starting training Monday, she has the academy, so she's just going to have to go through our field training program, so my, I anticipate her being online and working, working shifts on her own by March. When she does that, that will immediately take four to five shifts a week overtime, or eliminate them because she'll be working that line. We have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
So you're talking about, you know, some of the surpluses that you're looking at having in, higher cost savings, and we all know that we're down five offices right now, that's creating this big problem for us in the, in the police department. The ones that went on our military leave, I believe we paid them for the first six months, and after that, we don't, no longer pay.
Correct.
Is that going to help us in this next six months?
That will, because two of the officers were gone on July, on July first, so this last pay period was their, their last pay, we were paying them a percentage, it was basically the difference between their base pay here and what their military base pay is. So that goes away now, we don't pay them, we're not going to pay them until they come back. Anticipated return date is really, right now is, right now is May-ish, their orders go through May, but they're allowed an acclimation period when they come back, they may come back, you know, a couple of weeks early, but they have an acclimation period before they actually come back to work. And then the third officer, he left at the end of July, we'll call it August first, we pay him for the rest of this month, and then we recoup his salary for the rest of the fiscal year. You combine those salaries, until those officers come back to work, it's probably about, about seventy-six hundred dollars a pay period for those three offices, so we'll be recouping that, you know, moving forward, from their salaries.
You look at the run rate, I think the five-year run rate in overtime, and I know that your budget's like two fifty-five this past year.
Yes.
You look at the five-year run rate, if I'm correct, it's somewhere around three seventy-five, four hundred?
If, I went back to fiscal seventeen through fiscal twenty-two, because we had the complete year, and the average was about four hundred and forty thousand dollars in overtime.
So we're not that far off, considering we went down five offices?
Yes, yeah, considering that, yes.
All things being equal.
We're not.
I mean, that's, that hurts, five offices hurts.
It does.
So with the money that he's talking about right now, with the folks that are on military leave, it seems like if you add up what we've had already expended, unfortunately, plus what he's got available, we'll be probably just exceeding our five-year run rate.
Yeah, it'll probably be, yeah, I don't think it'll be his highest number, but it'll be close to it.
Manage as best we can.
Like, and I wish I had a better answer, but I think if we do this again in three months or in the end of March, I'll have a better idea, because I'll have probably better answers on return dates of the, of the two offices that are due back in May, May-ish, you know, from the military, and also have a better idea, you know, knock on wood, you know, have a better idea where everybody else stands.
Yeah, I mean, look, from the Board of Selectmen's perspective, we've got a couple remits. Public safety, and our roads, and, you know, our streets and roads, trash pickup, that's, you know, a big focus of ours, with the limited resources we have, you know, if we're like other municipalities, if we had more resources, we'd be investing in economic development and economic development opportunities, but we don't have that, right? So we, this is, the police department and public safety is a main function for us, and so we've got to figure this out, and we have to provide police protection, and it's just, that's what people, you know, expect, and so it's, we're going to manage it, but at the end of the day, it's something we've got to provide, there's no way, there's no way around it, so, you know.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I'll say this, this will be one of the last things I say, is that the overtime budget, like structurally, you know, at least in the last, you know, three or four years that, you know, that I've looked at budgets as chief, has been, has been underfunded, it's had a number, and then at the end of the year, it's kind of a, you know, let's beg, borrow and steal to, to sort of, to fill it in, and I'm not asking for the average of four hundred and forty thousand dollars, you know, be budgeted, I know that's not realistic, but a, somewhere between the four forty and the, and the two fifty-five that it was budgeted for this year, and if we're, say if I'm at three forty or three fifty, which is probably realistic, even though we're going to go over that, I think this year, we actually make that without anything, but unfortunately, it's kind of a, the deck is stacked against us in the way the budget's structured, but I understand, you know, how things have to be done.
You know, the other problem is too, is we lost our part-time, right? Because of that legislation, right, that went through that.
Correct, you know, early in my career, or even, you know, as recently as five or six years ago, we'd have four or five part-timers that, and of that, you know, might have two that were ready to go at a moment's notice, where they worked one shift a week, but then when you needed them, they were there five, six shifts a week. That's, that's not there, and that's through no fault of mine, yours, the Town of a Cushion, it's, that's.
A perfect one-two punch.
Correct.
All right, thanks, Chief. Look, again, Chief, the message, please work closely with Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
We don't want to be here looking at it after the fact, we want to know what's going on, manage trend lines, and then we can make, you know, programmatic decisions or, you know, decisions that we think are in the best interest of the community, but I think at the end of the day, if we knocked on every door in town, they would look at an investment in public safety and the police department as one and one A, is where they want their tax dollars to go.
And we've made significant cuts, as that document, I'm not going to, I'll let you get that at your leisure, but we've made significant cuts to different areas periodically since May of last year, in a stump to stem the tide, and I really, we're at the bone now, at this point, if anything else, if we're forced to cut any more staff, or staff programs, I should say, our hours, we really eviscerate the department and just, I think you damage it long-term going forward, I think we're at that breaking point now. And rest assured, I can tell you that, you know, everybody, you know, overtime, you know, you hear it, and the people always talk about public safety, you know, working over, they can work overtime, I can tell you right now, to a person, everybody in that department, if they ask a more or less overtime, they'd say less overtime, because the force ends are.
Overtime is what it is. It's more than what it is, right? And yes, it's a money-making opportunity, but it's less time you're spending with your family, it's less time that you're recuperating, it's, it's more wear and tear on your body and your mental health, so.
The officers, the officers have really stepped up, and they, they see the light at the end of the tunnel in a sense of, you know, new hires that the board is committed to, and people returning, so I think that they realize that, you know, that the light, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. Dr. Boucher, do you know if you will have a full committee, or?
I'm hoping so.
Okay, all right.
Not real, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're going to just do a brief recess, because technically, you'll have to open your meeting, but if it's just you and a couple of members and there's no quorum, then, you know, we won't have to, you won't have to, either way, we're just going to take a brief recess, we'll reconvene at six o'clock, and then we'll continue the rest of the meeting.
Sure.
Is the motion going to a brief recess?
So moved. Second?
In favor? Is there a motion to reopen the meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, we are joined by Mike Boucher, Mr. Benoit, Mr. Chu from the Finance Committee, and the audience, we have representatives from the school department here, and before we kind of kicked off the budget season, we thought we would provide for you and the residents sort of like a state of the town finances. You know, the budget process is kind of an odd one for people who aren't into it on a day-to-day to fully understand, right? Because on one hand, you could argue that the overall fiscal health of the town isn't that bad, right? Because of where we are with reserves, where we are with free cash, but the overall operating budget is where the real problem lies, is that expenses aren't necessarily keeping in with the amount of revenue that we are bringing in in the form of new growth and tax revenue and things of that, right? So that's, that's the problem, is that we go to town meeting every year and we say, okay, we're going to put this amount of money into free cash, and we're going to put this money into stabilization, and this amount of money into, you know, these different accounts that we've set up for capital improvement, all that stuff, and those are all like really good decisions to make, but then we're talking about like staffing and what we can do on the operational side. So I think as a town, we've got some challenges that we've got to, you know, they're bigger, bigger picture issues, like how do we handle economic development? You know, there's a lot of things that we're saying no to because we can't afford, and that's in the form of like a bona fide planning department, right? And if we had that in place, I mean, we'd be able to make some better decisions when it comes to economic development, but we don't have that, and we don't have the right zoning in place, and so, anyway, those are some of my observations and frustrations, you know, gentlemen, just gassing that for a while, because they think they do, they're relatively new to this process, so.
I agree, I totally agree with you, Dave, you know, this is my, I'll refer to it as a season, seventeenth season on the Finance Committee, so I've been here a long time, and, but every year, I learn something new, and you forget stuff too, as you go along, because like you said, we're not in the day-to-day grind of, you know, the town hall operations, but I know we all try and stay abreast of what's going on in watching meetings, I've watched numerous Board of Selectmen meetings, just to try and stay informed as to what's going on in town, being in contact with Mr. Kelly on a regular basis, and I think you guys are doing a great job altogether.
Thanks for saying that, and I wanted to ask, you know, before we get into this stuff, is there anything that we can be doing to make your life easier, as a member of the Finance Committee and go through this budget process, do you have any, you know, lessons learned from last year, the previous year, from a process standpoint, that you'd like to see from us that we can help you with?
Definitely the addition of Mr. Kelly this year has been huge.
Absolutely, I was going to say.
I mean, day in terms of being able to get accurate information and type, we would be in trouble, I think, if we didn't have him on board.
Okay, and you even have Patrick, right?
Yes, I do.
I would encourage, if you haven't, if you haven't had a chance after this. I would encourage, if you haven't, if you haven't had a chance after this, to get together and get to know these guys. As I mentioned in the, in the previous meeting with PJ Keating, the personal relationships, that's the fine print of every contract, that's the fine print of the budget, that's the fine print of, you know, any permit, is that personal relationship, so I would encourage you to get to know these folks on the Finance Committee, above and beyond just the budget process, so.
Yeah, beyond the numbers.
Yeah.
You know, I know, you know, every year has its challenges, and every year is its own entity, in a way, and I would anticipate this coming year is going to be very challenging, for numerous reasons, and I'm sure we're going to get into all that, you know, tonight.
I've been hitting this hammer on the table for quite some time, and, you know, I've, I've said it a number of times, and it's just, you're at the point where you only have so much income and revenue to cover what we want to provide for services, right? You get the Prop Two-and-a-Half levy increase, this one, this coming year is like five twenty-four, you get new growth, it's a little bit of a moving target, I think we're projecting two fifty, but, you know, I'm saying, anyway, two fifty, three hundred, and so I've spoke on that number, and that's really what the DOR says, this is what you have to use for a budgetary number. So if you just look at it, just call it an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar number, for the sake of discussion, you look at that eight-hundred-thousand dollars, and you look at, you know, the contractual obligations that both the school and the town have for employee-based, even at roughly two percent, say, you're looking at about four hundred thousand, about half of that is coming off just to meet that contractual obligation. Then you have your fixed costs, whatever number, the moving number, that's going to be a buck, buck and a half, two bills, you're only left with a couple hundred grand left to try to make magic happen, right? And that, and that's what becomes the frustrating part for everybody, because we all want to try to do more, and I know everybody wants more, but there's only so much of it that we have to go around, and that's, that's where, really, where that push comes to shove, and we have to just realize that this is all we have for revenue, and this is all that we have to disperse amongst everybody, and, you know, we've said it before, we, public safety, garbage, is mostly where our expenses go, and then you've got, the School Department is basically roughly two-thirds of the town's budget, right? So, I mean, that's where you're kind of shaking the stick, is trying to figure out that balance, and saying, what do we have, what can we do, what are the schools' needs, and then try to make it all blend and mesh, and go to town meeting with a balanced budget. We've been, I'd like to think that we've been pretty successful in the past years of doing just that, it's just, it's getting hotter and hotter as the budgets increase, so.
We, I think, in a question that, we can pass a no-frills budget with the best of them, right? Like, the challenge becomes the opportunity cost of not doing, of not doing things, of making certain investments, whether that's in our employees, and then all of a sudden, now we're in a situation, thankfully, Mr. Kelly did, right, we saw that, right, we didn't have somebody, we couldn't find somebody, we had somebody, right? You know, not investing in certain departments, and then those people leaving, so I think it's all intertwined enough of that. Mr. Kelly, if you wouldn't mind walking us through where we are from a numbers standpoint?
Mr. Chairman, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, and then Town Meeting are the decision-makers. The staff are only advisors. We can give you our estimates, we can give you our hard figures, we can show you what the budget busters are, we can show you what your cost centers are, but we only are as good as being transparent and giving you the information. And I can't say it's going to be an easy year, you've got a lot of demands, and revenue is very restricted, and I think upfront, giving you the revenue figures very quickly in the budget process makes then the options that you have to consider very, very important all the way through this process. One thing that we are looking at, and I will point out, we are still the new finance team, the new management team, we're still finding certain deficiencies that have to be worked on, I'll highlight them. I've got some concerns, even though I've given you estimates in this presentation, I have concerns that some of those estimates might be high, and I'll highlight that. And then we go into the budget process, we talk to all the departments, and we try to come out with a balanced budget for presentation to Town Meeting. When you hired me, I told you my philosophy, we do not use one-term, one-time revenue, free cash for operating budgets. If you're going to use free cash, which you did a number of years ago, you have to then justify it to DOR and a three-year plan to pay it back. It's something that only digs a hole deeper, it's not a solution. So you've, you've got what you have, and that's what it is. The other real problem for this year is you've got a new administration in Boston. The governor's budget, which usually comes out in January, is due March one. So we're not going to have hard state aid figures until almost Town Meeting, if then. So it's going to be an estimate all the way through. My state aid figures are based on last year's figures, and I'm thinking that the legislature will not have the courage to decrease or cut those figures as far as the basis for it. But if we can start the, and it's not coming through, there it is, the revenue from two and a half, you see, is five twenty-four, two sixty, new growth is a decrease. My estimate, looking at everything you've done in the pipeline, and what the permits have been, you're losing about eighty thousand dollars in new growth estimates. Admittedly, I've been conservative in that, but then with the unused levy capacity, and the money out for overlay, and the money that you have to put into your solar farm revenue capital fund, you're looking at six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-six for your operational tax levy. That is very conservative, your actual levies, before you took that out, was seven hundred and seventy-six thousand and change. And those, other than the new growth figures, those figures are locked in, you don't have any wiggle room there at all. State aid, as I said, I took Chapter Seventy and UGGA, which is primarily lottery-type monies, and put the standard for year-to-year, the same increase. Everything else is pretty much a wash. You've got an increase of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. You are not a gateway community. You are not a city that is going to get extra money from the legislature. You're not a school district that's going to get extra money, so I am hoping that Chapter Seventy and the UGGA money comes in at that level. And I'm just looking at it because of what's happened in the past. There any questions going through, please ask. When you combine the two, your operational tax levy and state aid, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine. Now, yours, I've increased the state assessments, but that is a conservative increase. Here is where I'm very nervous, is your local receipts. Motor vehicle excise, when you combine both the motor vehicle excise and the motor vehicle dedicated to paving lines, one million, four hundred and fifty thousand. I think if you have any play in that, it's not more than a plus or minus fifty thousand. As you know, new cars are not being delivered, even if people want to buy them, and so you've got a decrease in monies. If it was the best-of-all-worlds, a hundred percent rosy, I would say you might be able to go up a hundred thousand dollars here. I don't think you're going to see that this year. The bills go out in February, I'll know better in March, and at the beginning of April, where we're at, but I think this, where I said is a conservative estimate, is a rosy conservative estimate. Your license and permits, I've increased it twenty thousand in the estimate, I'm real nervous about that, very nervous.
That seems like a big jump.
I see the permits, but you, our tracking of permits is on a calendar year, so.
Is it because the rates are, the rates are increased on the permits?
And the fact that you get money for the value of the project, and so everything has gone up. But when you look at it here, when it comes up, the next, the analysis, you've had a year with license and permits that you've been lower than the estimate.
We're not relying on that money to help balance the budget, are we?
You always are.
But like.
Totally the difference from year over year, so if all of that number, just easy math for everybody at home, and all of us, if all of that local receipts equals two hundred thousand last year, and we get two twenty, you really only get twenty as additional revenue, because that first two hundred's already been taken and used for budgetary.
I'm talking about the license and permits.
Yeah, but when you look at the bottom line here, I'm only relying on an increase of twenty-four thousand and change from local receipts to balance the budget. Most of the other monies are coming out of the tax levy, state aid, et cetera. What I'm really trying to stress is, we are in such a tight revenue year, that twenty thousand dollars either way is, when I'm looking at the expenses that I know are coming in, that are the budget busters, like Bristol County Retirement is an increase of over a hundred thousand dollars. The tuition monies, we don't know, Old Colony, we don't know. I'm looking at a COLA of three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand in the various with steps and lane changes and everything, from the various contracts. Admittedly, they're estimates, and we'll look at it. Last year, we were hit with a fourteen percent health insurance increase. I'm only looking at a ten percent as far as my budgeting right now, but that's.
An additional ten percent here.
Yes.
The licensing, you guys are rolling out new software for that, and you, how are you paying for the annual licensing for that?
That's part of.
Is that going to come out of this licensing fee, or is that?
No, that's, that's part of one of my budget busters, is going to be the licensing. And as far as the first, the purchase for both the school and the town, I'm looking at close to a quarter million dollars in technology purchases this year.
That'd be from free cash?
Which we have to do, because, a good chunk of it, because we have to upgrade in UNIS, we've got a server in the police department that if it goes down, it will not restart.
That's, that, that, just because we're talking about budgets.
Yeah.
And the conversation that you just struck with Mr. Kelly, that two fifty is from free cash.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not part of that eight hundred, let's pretend that number's eight hundred, that two fifty is not part of that eight hundred, because that's budgeting, and then we just jumped into free cash.
Capitals.
And that's what I was talking about earlier, Eric, is that from a infrastructure, you know, to deal with like infrastructure one-time expenditures, we're actually in pretty good shape. On day-to-day operating, that's what's, you're really, really, really.
Well, that's why I brought up the licensing, because I know from my own experience that.
Yeah, we know, we know what we've got to do with that, and year-to-year, yes, it's an issue, but what we're looking at here is your increase of eight hundred thousand dollars, round figures, of revenue, will be eaten up by any COLA and all of your budget busters. There is no room for increases. I've instructed the departments to prepare a level-funded budget, a one percent increase of mandated costs, and a five percent decrease. So, and we'll be presenting to the Board of Selectmen the recommendations of the staff, and they will forward it to the FinCon, but we have very little room to move on anything.
I anticipated that, just to cover the increases in fixed costs are going to be a struggle this year.
And we don't know what fuel and utilities are going to.
That's the other thing, utility increases.
Which is a huge cost for the school with bus, busing.
So a couple of things, like, as we're dealing with this challenge, right, I would ask, you know, the only way we're going to get through this is with, like, heightened, heightened transparency. I think part of that is, as we're dealing with you, with Todd and the team, unearthing some, just problems that we have, you know, from accounting standpoint and all that stuff, and Sarah, and I don't know Patrick if this is even feasible on your end, but like, you've got a really bright guy here on the, on the business side of it, and I would encourage Jamie and Sarah to like, and consider Patrick as part of the overall town finance team, because I think the more you know about what's going on, and you're part of that, you know, maybe it's a working group of, of the finance teams, you know, and you're part of that process, because I think you might be able to help see things, you've been around the block a few times, but to like, I think where we've gone wrong, maybe over the years, we've been siloed, and, you know, but we don't have, we don't have the, we don't have time for that now, you know, like, we've got to like really figure this out, and, you know, if that makes sense for you guys to.
That has been happening this year.
Okay, good. You guys, that's what's going on? All right, so that's good.
I am.
Not, you know, like, we, not part of negotiating, like.
No, no, no.
You see, so.
We started that last year.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
We did.
And we've been working closely with the schools, closely with the Finance Committee, we've been keeping you informed. It was with cooperation with Patrick and the finance group here, that we dealt with the school choice issue, where we found the double billing, one through assessment, one through. One through assessment, one through the line in, in the school budget. Mr. Gaspar and I have been talking about some of the issues that have been gone on in the past, in the finance department of the past, where they, instead of using, decreasing the amount of, by the assessments, they were adding it instead of subtracting it at one point.
All right, good, I'm glad to hear that, and sorry, you know, I wish I, I should have known that or paid closer attention to that.
And also with my Dr. Boucher, we've been meeting with him, and he'll be coming over to one of our budget meetings too. Well, in addition to everything else that's going on.
I think, Mr. Jim, yeah. I, I think, you know, I've been, obviously, I'm always heavily involved in, in the finance. And Mr. Kelly and I, we kind of identified it when he first came in, when we were doing the recap sheet. And it was quite alarming if you look at the local receipts, I know it's hard to see on this chart, but if he goes back, it's, it's the interest income, right? I talked about this a little while ago, when we were talking about the recap sheets and how many Mr. Kelly and I had gone through. So the interest income, we're only earning like five or six thousand dollars, right? And I'm sitting there saying to myself, with Mr. Kelly, is, how could that be? I am, so I, that's what I do, and I'm looking at the interest and I'm saying, so if I have three million dollars in stabilization from the town's perspective, is how can I only be earning five thousand dollars in interest? It doesn't make any sense, right? It's like a point oh-five interest rate. So, you know, Mr. Kelly and the finance team kind of just dove in and said, well, it's a good point, we're going to look at that number and scrutinize it. Well, lo and behold, we did that. We know what the problem, we've identified the problem. Angela, I believe the new treasurer's working with you on, we transferring some funds around. Because of the way the bank was holding our money, we were only getting interest on the initial deposit fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, right? And not all the money, all the other money we were putting in. So we'll lose in interest on hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars really, right? And that was very disturbing to me, because I'm, I'm all about earning interest, right? So after the breakdown with Mr. Kelly and the finance team, I'm sitting there saying, you know, this, this number should really equal like a hundred and fifty, just throwing numbers out of my head. Back then, it was like a hundred fifty, a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Well, they come back, they move the money out of certain accounts into new accounts, earning a much higher rate of return. And it, it comes out that we've been getting screwed a couple hundred thousand bucks a year.
Really?
On our money for over a decade, at least, minimum over a decade.
You have about three million and change in stabilization accounts. You have in sewer and other enterprise accounts and Betterman's accounts, three to four million dollars. You have been, and I'll, I'll get to OPEV in a minute. You are, we're earning so negligible amounts prior to the new finance team coming in. We've transferred millions, and we will keep transferring as we need to into other banks. We're meeting with Bartholomew on the long-term accounts to see. There is a list that goes on for twenty pages of where we could be that the state allows our enterprise funds to be invested in, and not just left in some local bank miniscule rates that we can spread it out into, where they do give you categories where a quarter of your total amount can be in like, let's say, Florida power and light. Some can be in bonds, et cetera. And I'm not saying the immediate previous treasurer, because she was a treasurer collector that long. But prior to that, someone should have been doing the investment of these monies, and they haven't been. And I'd say you're looking going back minimum of five to seven years that this, these monies should have been invested properly. And you should have been getting at least a hundred thousand dollars in local receipt money. Right now, we've got, just in the bank accounts alone, we've, we were, we're up around three and a half to four percent, where you were at half a percent with the deal you had before.
And half a percent of only the initial deposit.
Yeah, so.
Not even what was in it.
So we've got, let's just say you have three million dollars, right? Instead, just use the town stabilization account, because enterprise is a little bit different. That's not for everybody to jump in and say, hey, we got money. That has to get, all that interest earned stays with that enterprise fund. So let's just talk about the regular stabilization account, the town's, let's just call it three million bucks, a little bit more, well, it's easy math, right? Free, and you're earning three percent, I'm getting ninety thousand dollars a year. How do I look at a number, and I see five or six thousand dollars? Just when all I did was say, what's the town stabilization? I know what my other accounts are, what we could do within the enterprise fund. That's Mr. Kelly's expertise in the finance team, that's what we're working on. But just the stabilization account, we should have been generating at least a hundred grand a year. And if you take that easy math again, ten years, it's a million dollars we've lost out on, okay? I'm not making a hundred thousand dollars as a town accountant, but it's pretty simple math, in my opinion, to look at this and say, there's something wrong here, Captain, we need to figure this out. And it's nice, I mean, think about it, you get a hundred grand, just pretend it's a hundred grand, it's probably going to be more, but let's say a hundred grand a year in interest. Your stabilization account just becomes self-sufficient at that point, it just keeps growing, right? We, we have a certain limit that we can put in, but they don't limit how much interest we can earn on that money, right? So when we reach that cap, which I think we're pretty, pretty close, right?
Where, where right now, our state general stabilization's at ten percent of our budget. The maximum they allow is fifteen percent of our total operating budget.
So we're, we're close, and nobody says we need to get to that maximum. We've done a good job of growing stabilization over the years, the board has, and the town, and FinCom. But wouldn't it be nice to see that number grow on its own? I mean, isn't that what we all try to do, and we invest our own money for our retirement?
It should.
I mean, that's, that's what we're all chasing, we're chasing yield. I mean, that's what we do, that's, that's how you get rich, you know? I was taught a long time ago, you're going to work as a young adult, and you're going to work hard, and you're going to make bank. The object of the game is, is to make enough bank for your money to work for you, and you no longer have to work for your money. That's my philosophy.
So my question is, who's position responsible for oversight of this? I mean.
Your finance, your previous finance teams.
So all this time went on, and that was never discovered?
And part of the problem is, for some of the folks, you promoted people that had no experience or education to do the jobs. And right now, it's not just this town, but a number of towns are having problems filling those jobs. I'm lucky in that I knew people who could come in and help me restructure this, these problems that are a lot of experience, but I'm using consultants right now to straighten out this mess. Like, your lack of revenue for interest means that you're going to get a better bang for the buck, but it's a year hence. So it's next year's time that you're going to do it. We've got a tough year to get through.
It's, it, it's frosting on the cake. It's not something for us to all look at and get giddy and go, oh, look what we're going to have, because you're not going to have, right? It's not like that. I mean, you could possibly use it, but at any given time, if, if the town was to say, for whatever reason, let's use the school roof that we're doing right now, thank God, we, the board voted to go with the solar revenue fund, and that's how we're paying, through a debt exclusion. But that's like one point three million dollars from the town side that we're picking up that tab for that school roof, right? If we didn't have that solar revenue fund to dip into, we could, instead of doing a debt exclusion and raising people's taxes for whatever amount of time you're going to borrow that one point three million, fifteen years or twenty years, we could just simply say, three million dollars, one point five, let's pretend the school roof's one point five, now you're only down to one point five. So that, that shrinks the amount of interest. So you can never really use all your interest and start, you know, using that for budgetary reasons, because at any given point, you could come across that rainy day or emergency, that you're going to chop that stabilization in half, and you're, you're going to lose that revenue, you're going to chop that revenue, interest income, in half. So you're always going to be careful with it, it's just nice to know that you can be growing your money. And, and, I mean, we, this is, this is like basic econ, economics one-on-one. We've just like, so I, I'm, I'm just, I'm grateful that Mr. Kelly and the team, we've, we've sat down, we've, you know, we're drilling through the numbers, and we've, I have Mr. Kelly to work with now, and explain things to me when I ask questions, and he's like, oh, yeah, what the hell is going on with that? And so I am very grateful to have Mr. Kelly on board when it comes to that stuff. And, you know, Angela, the new treasurer collector, and as you said, Mr. Hassett, you know, he's part of our finance team, right? He, he's a consultant, but he's, he's part of our finance team. He's locked and loaded with the town of a cushion, and so we only have him on a part-time basis, but the guy is super intelligent. So I'm, I'm happy and proud to have him on board for the time being, whatever time you have him for, Angela.
And Mr. Gaspar, I have to shout out to Patrick, because he's been working with us. He's found stuff that, like concerning the electric, and the, the fact that we were banking all those credits and never using them, and that type of thing. So it's, we've got a hole to dig out of. We've got another year that we have to dig the town out of the hole. And we can then put in a financial plan together that will keep the basic expenses of the town to the point where we can afford to pay them. And we're going out to look for new health insurance as far as a provider maybe not change the basic provider, Harvard Health Insurance, but how we purchase it. Tonight, you allowed us to go out for an RFP for legal services. We're talking to four or five groups about P and C insurance. All of, any of these savings that we do for our joint accounts, because all of those are joint accounts that the school and the town have to have in place. Because, you know, you're going to insure your buildings. You're going to make sure, the state make sure we have work as co. I mean, our, our work is co-built, two-thirds of it is the school, one-third of it is the town. It's just the way government works.
All right, any other questions?
I've got a question.
Yeah, please.
Didn't we, we had some previous issues with the auditing company, correct?
We fired the auditor.
That's what I thought. So is that?
We have a new firm.
So if they were doing their job the way they, they were supposed to, shouldn't that have been picked up by them?
Only if the town told them what they were to do more than the basics. All they were doing was coming in and saying, here is what the beginning balance says, here is what the end balance says, and all your expenditures in between add up to this. They did not do what I would call a.
Forensic.
Yeah, it should have been more of a detailed than.
Forensic.
They did not do anything more than a balance sheet audit.
Nothing, I mean, nothing like, yeah, let's, let's not go above and beyond what we're supposed to do, because we were only told to do this.
Not even above and beyond.
And part of that.
With the higher-ups, they look at every little thing, right? So why wouldn't they look at it? What's the number?
Oh, yeah, if any of us were going through an audit.
That's great.
Because your management team didn't ask for it.
All right, any other?
I have a real quick question. Everybody's talking about trying to save money where we can. Electric rates are going up. Is there any consideration of putting solar panels on like all the town buildings? Like the COA has got a pretty big roof, library's got a good size, they have a huge roof.
They're looking.
They have a new, they have a new roof. Yes, let's not go there.
They can't put, they don't own the roof yet. But there's a discussion.
Because I know you guys are talking about doing like a canopy thing. That's, that's a huge step in that direction. I mean, that would save a lot of money.
That meeting, and my question relative to that would have been, is it, would it be more cost-effective to just have solar panels on the existing roofs instead of having to build out this canopy, which is going to cost more, more money to add a structure, right?
It's not costing.
Yeah, I don't know.
We're not paying for the construction.
And there's actually a better incentive for canopy projects versus roof projects, there's more credits. So it allows our contract to be lower in cost. And we, we wouldn't maintain or pay for any of the actual infrastructure of the canopy. It would all be owned by the, the solar company under a leasing contract.
Patrick's car would be protected from the elements, so it's a good deal.
Yeah, and that's exactly right, and also fits into our safety goals with the ice and the snow and the rain for kids and people walking back and forth between the schools.
We'll talk about the other buildings, I mean.
We can investigate it, but right now, it's more along the lines of just seeing where we're going and trying to undo the mistakes.
This is a thought, I mean.
Well, I mean, we're all, we're all at the mercy of all these fixed costs, which are there every year, they don't go anywhere. And I think this year, they're, they're worse, because we're experiencing unprecedented inflation right now too, at the federal level. And it trickles down to the state, and face it, we live in an expensive state to live in. I mean, this is, it's not cheap to live here. It's getting tougher and tougher to do these, to balance this.
All right, any other, there are no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for the great presentation, Sarah, Patrick, thank you for being here. And gentlemen, thank you for your commitment to the town. Finance committee is a unsung hero, you know, and.
Hero or zero or.
Zero, right? You get an earful at town meeting.
Sometimes, yeah.
So I'll, I'll pre-apologize for that already, you know? And just keep doing what you do, because without you, we'd be in real tough shape. So with that, we have nothing else on the agenda, future business. We do, again, one more announcement. January twelfth, six p.m. at the Council on Aging, we'll be doing a, a hearing, air quotes, on the DEP regulations on nitrogen. And so for residents who are opposed, please show up, come in, register, we're going to run it, we're going to, we're going to move through very quickly. Where, you know, we want to hear as many noes as possible, name, address.
So is that, by doing this, is that going to like, give, give us more ammunition against?
So we're trying to create a little bit of grassroots, right? So our legislators are opposed, we are opposed, and we want to include all of this in our packet of information that we forward off to the DEP. To say, look, these residents, there's a lot of opposition here, and they need to, they need to visit this thing. One, one item is, look, we've been trying to work on Lake Street and the nitrogen there. That could be part of that puzzle, right? Like if we could address that issue, that might be what our good faith effort to address the problem that gets our residents off the hook.
I think it's a, I think it's a major issue facing this town.
Are you still in session?
We are still in session, and the next meeting is January twenty-fourth, the Board of Selectmen. So if there's no other, no other issues.
Actually, Mr. Kelly, before you leave, I just, I don't know if you can answer this quickly. Have all the contracts been ratified in town?
The exception of police.
So just the police?
We just wrapped up fire, and the only outstanding one just.
Okay, and what, how about opera funds? Where, where do we stand with that? Is that like done now, or?
It's only just beginning.
Okay. All right, and then I just, I'd like to give a shout out to our new selectman, Mr. Henkley. I think he's done a great job. He, he puts up a lot of stuff on social media, but he handles himself very well, answers everything in a, in a great, great fashion. And, and thanks for going the extra, thanks for going the extra mile with this mass DEP thing, it's out of five, because.
Thanks for being a part of it.
Hey, it's, it's, it's important for our residents, because to add, potentially tell a resident, look, you're going to have to pay between twenty and thirty, thirty thousand dollars to add to whatever, you know, we've all, we've all been hit. to add to whatever, you know, we've all, we've all been hit with a bigger property tax bill this year, homeowners insurance, you name it, and it's gone up, nothing's going down. And then if we're going to add that kind of thing to our residents, I mean, you're going to start seeing private residents being forced out. They're not going to be able to afford to live here.
Correct.
If something like this goes down.
And then goes your tax base.
Yeah, exactly. So I mean, I think this mass DEP thing is really, I think it's a critical issue. And we need to get all the, all the residents on board in this.
Sure is. I mean, it's not even just the nitrogen part of it. That, that's what you identified, that, that's the unfunded mandate part. But what, what happens when somebody with an older septic system, i.e. moi, right? As an older, I'm a lifelong resident, right? So nobody can screw with me and tell me to replace my thing until I have to sell my house. But anyways, when you try to go in and install something like that with an older system that's built, you start disturbing that.
Yeah, system.
Right now, a septic system replacement for a small, I mean, it's probably like 30 Gs just on its own, and you got to do another third. Who can afford $60,000 with all these other costs going up? I mean, people are struggling like Mr. Boucher says. People are already struggling. Not everybody makes $100, $200,000 a year and says, I can afford to do that, go to the bank and take out a loan for 50 or 60 Gs and say, all right, let's do that.
Well, my other question...
You're seniors, you're seniors.
My other question is, is where's the proof that said septic user is contributing to this problem? I mean, if you're, if you have a good working septic system, how do you know that that person is contributing to excess nitrogen going into the waterways? We don't know. How are they going to tell us that? Is there going to be a way for us to, for them to test and to tell each homeowner, you're contributing this X amount of nitrogen? Because some of the research I've done, one of the biggest problems is with agriculture and fertilizers.
I was just going to say that, you would tell the farmers to stop using it.
So, and then the other, the other question is...
They did it in Sri Lanka, and look what happened there. They overshot the government, right?
So are they going to, are they going to tell all residents that even, don't even have septic, that are tied into sewer? Ah, well, yeah, you can't use fertilizer anymore. I mean, there's so much gray area with this thing, it's...
You also have very little data on whether the systems they want you to put in actually work in New England.
I mean, you...
They were tested in the south.
So we don't know if it works in cold climate, but you're going to put one in your yacht if they're $30,000.
I will not be doing that. There'll be, if I had to do that, there'll be a for sale sign first.
All right. Not until after finance, not until I get the budget. Motion carries.
So we'll...
Well, those are favorite.
Aye.